Seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee at 6:32 PM on Tuesday, June 1st. And we will begin with a roll call attendance. When I call your name, please state present. Mr. Demling.
Deming, present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, present.
Ms. Kenny is not here. Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, present.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, present.
Mr. Stamel?
Stamel, present.
Mr. Sullivan? Not present, and McDonald, present. We also, so Ms. Kenny will be joining us. She will be a little bit late. And Ms. Kane, our student representative, is not able to join us this evening. And we also have Dr. Morris, Superintendent Dr. Morris, and Ms. Ciala Sharkus. Our first item is to approve the minutes from May 18th, and those were included in our packet. Any discussion or edits? Ms. Stanser? You're muted, Ms. Stanser.
Thank you. In the in attendance section under guests, Doug Slaughter's name has got an extra letter on it, an H at the end. On the second page, about, in the first paragraph, a little over halfway done, "We did not apply for virtual options, so this fall we will not be online," not should be inserted. On the page, third page, under second paragraph, under Superintendent Evaluation Process, next to last line of the second paragraph, "Comments on previous versions." I believe it should be comments on previous sections. We were talking about, yeah. And on page four, at the very end, on June 15th meeting, we'll have the last line, "Superintendent's evaluation findings." I believe it's actually the superintendent's presentation of artifacts relating to meeting his goals for the current school year. Maybe that's what evaluation findings meant, but I wasn't sure. That's all I have.
I think that's an appropriate edit. Any other edits or comments? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the minutes for May 18th, 2021, as amended. Is there a second?
A second?
Moved by McDonald and seconded by Spitzer. Any further discussion? Move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Stamel?
Stamel, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Next up is public comment, and we received no public comment today. So I will just remind viewers that we accept public comment at any time up until 3:00 PM on the day of our meetings. So you can submit a public comment for our next meeting, two weeks from now, by emailing me at mcdonaldarps.org with the subject line "Public Comment", or by leaving a voicemail message at 413-345-2949. And all of that information is included in each of our attendance. So we will now move on to, next up is Superintendent's update. And I will make my reminder again to our school committee members that this item is intended for the superintendent to update us on matters of interest and importance for the community and for the committee. We can ask questions, but if there's a topic that is in addition to what was covered, I ask that you bring that up for future agenda planning so that the committee can weigh in and have that discussion. So turn it over to you, Dr. Morris.
Sure. Thank you, Chair McDonald. And so I think I've got six items for tonight. One was that we had a highly successful second-shot vaccine clinic. This is for students aged 16 plus last week. It was three weeks after the first shot. And we had 100% of our students who received the first shot, receive a second shot, with the exception of one, but that person had another medical appointment that day, and we know rescheduled with the town vaccine clinic. So that's how we get to 100%. That didn't happen without tremendous amount of work. I want to thank our nursing staff, who made a tremendous number of, they called every single family, every single student. Particularly our ELL department at the high school, again, walked students down, held hands for the people like me who would have needed it. In terms of shot-phobic people, you know, just people were really on it. So just really happy because we know how important it is for that second shot to actually occur. And, you know, while there's not tons of people not getting their second shot, it still is happening both in Massachusetts and elsewhere. We have our upcoming second shot for 12-plus on Friday. It'll be at the middle school. We're meeting with the town tomorrow morning to assess whether the same outdoor site is better or whether we need to move to an indoor location because of the potential thunderstorms that are forecast for Friday. And it's not easy to quickly move a vaccine clinic inside. So we'll make that announcement tomorrow. We'll communicate out. Everyone has the same vaccine time they had the first time. They were emailed about a week and a half ago about the date, and we'll send a reminder as well because we want to make sure we get the folks their second clinic. And just again, continued thanks to the town for their work on that with us and their collaboration. Kind of relatedly, the town of Amherst is doing really well as it relates to COVID. So the last positive case in the community was on May 20th, and that was coming from a test on May 18th. So, you know, we're not out of the woods. I wouldn't use that terminology. I want to be really clear about that. And we haven't had a stretch of, let's see, May 18th, is that like roughly two weeks, something like that, with no positive cases in a very, 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 very long time. So this is good news, and we'll just thank the community for, you know, both the vaccination rate being high here, but also for folks taking it seriously in terms of safeguards and making some good decisions. So, you know, we'll want to keep that rolling. We'll see what happens, you know, tomorrow. Every morning I get sort of the update that gets posted publicly, but it's nice to see the goose eggs continue to come every single day. And, you know, so very fortunate to live in a community where people have taken this COVID safety with that level of seriousness. Third thing I have is retirement award ceremony. So it's really nice. We are having things in person again, both school, but also some other events. So the retirement award ceremony, which we have every year, is scheduled for June 23rd at 4:00. And this is to celebrate folks in the district who are retiring, as well as folks who are at least at 15 years of service, and then every five years after that. So 15, 20, 25, and so on. So we'll do that under the tents behind the high school. Any committee members want to, you know, want to come? It's a really nice event. You know, please just shoot me, or actually, please shoot W.S. Moreland an email. She'll be much better at getting back to you, and she's planning the whole event. But, you know, it's nice to be able to get back to that last year. You know, it's one of my favorite events of the year. Those who've been on the committee for a while know that. And it's, last year just, you know, wasn't quite the same. And so I'm glad to be able to get back to that. Similarly, we have our graduation schedule. This Friday is Summit Academy, so that's our first one at the regional level. And again, much like the vaccine clinic, we're looking at a couple of options in terms of location, given the weather forecast that we see for Friday. We'll make that decision probably by the end of the day, tomorrow, if not Thursday morning. We have a large number of graduates from Summit Academy this year, which is great. And they're going to do some in-school kind of celebrations, as well as the formal graduation. The high school graduation is at Look Park. It is on the 10th in the late afternoon. And I think the committee members, you should have gotten an email from Sasha, and just please confirm by the end of the day today. So after the end of this meeting, I know, because tomorrow we'll be trying to get the final information out and seats and all that. So with the state loosening the restriction on outdoor gatherings, it does mean that families are going to be able to see their child graduate, and committee members can attend more than just the chair. It'll be a briefer ceremony than normal. My words, Ms. McDonald's words, Principal Siddique's words. Everyone's going to be very, very brief, and the majority of it will be celebrating the students and having them get their diplomas. But the state guidance is very clear on having short ceremonies. So I'm more than happy to oblige on my end of that. I know Ms. McDonald and Mr. Siddique are as well. Some in the middle school will be, it's customarily a second-to-last day or last day, and that'll be a briefer one, probably by team to reduce the number of people, but still working on that one. Second-to-last thing, on June 3rd, which is two days from now, the high, the middle school, rather, will hold its Climate Change Carnival. So it's interdisciplinary approach. There's hands-on workshops, guest speakers. You know, so the staff members are Kriti Wayfield, Tiffany Thibodeau, and Irene LaRoche have taken the lead on that. And Rich Faro is the coordinator of the Climate Change Carnival. And this is all sponsored by an AEF, Amherst Education Foundation grant. So just many, one of the many ways AEF contributes is they made this possible. And again, looking forward to seeing that. I think an invitation was extended to school committee members for that as well. And the last thing is, we have the High School Musical coming this week. So that schedule shifted a bit because of the weather on Thursday. So it's now looking more like Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But just, you know, I've seen some of the students went over and saw them rehearsing Fabulous Job. John Beck told us facilitating that, but the students, as always, take the lead. And, you know, really, really good experience. Hope everyone is able, who is interested, is able to do that outside, on the library side. Back to your old neck of the woods, school committee's old neck of the woods. That side of the high school should be a really, really wonderful event. So lots of good in-person things going on as well. And with that, I'll take any questions anyone has.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, just a couple of on-topic comments. So just another shout-out to Principal Siddique and his team at the high school for all of the flexibility they've had with graduation planning this year. You know, they certainly could have taken the easy way out and stuck with the original plan. And the state has not been timely. Or given us a lot of, you know, lead time with its changes, as has been typical. And they've just responded amazingly. They've just done a tremendous amount of work. So I just really want to thank Principal Siddique and Assistant Principal Cameron and all the rest of the staff who've worked out all those logistics to make it what will hopefully be a great ceremony. And the musical, yeah. The only thing I would add about that is that tickets are still available. So if you just Google ARHS, Sound of Music is probably the easiest way other than, or if you go to Eventbrite. And it's all outside, a small ceremony, so very COVID-safe. And the proceeds go directly to rebuilding the program. It may not be well-known, but the, you know, it takes a lot of effort and resources to put on a very large production. And so the ticket sales go into funding the next year's production. And so with the cancellation of Spring Awakening a year and a half ago, you know, there's a tightening of resources there. So the ticket proceeds this year will help continue to keep the program going. One of the largest community events at the high school, which has been really tremendous. So I just wanted to thank the performing arts heads as well for really responding very quickly to putting that together as well.
Any other questions? Seeing none. And move on to our next item then, which is the chair's update. I don't have an update for this evening. So we'll move to school committee announcements. And I do have an announcement here for the policy subcommittee. Met a week ago, and we'll meet again on Thursday evening to continue discussions on the supplier diversity commitment policy proposal, as well as any other policy referrals that come out of tonight's meeting. That is 6:45 on Thursday, and it will be streamed on the YouTube channel. Any other announcements from the school committee? Ms. Lord.
Yes, I have an announcement from my position on the CES Subcommittee, which is collaborative. They have hired a new executive director. His name is Dr. Todd Gazda, and he was a superintendent in Ludlow, and we welcome him, and we're grateful. Thank you.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, I just want to say, Dr. Gazda is incredible. He's a close colleague of mine from his work in Ludlow, and I was just thrilled to see that he took on that role. But I think for the committees, all the committees, because, you know, we've got the, almost the five, you know, in terms of representatives here. I think, you know, he's from Western Mass. He understands, you know, rural towns for our three rural towns. But he also worked in Ludlow and does a lot of great work with diversity and equity. So I think we will all really benefit from having Todd in that role. So thank you for mentioning. I probably should have done that myself. I appreciate it, Ms. Lord, for that. And I look forward to working with him in that role, new role.
Any other announcements from committee members? Seeing none. And then we can move on to our new and continuing business. And tonight, first up, we have a discussion on supports for student mental health and well-being. And we have several guests here. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Morris, to help me introduce who's joining us.
Sure. Thank you. And thanks, you know, it's too bad Ruby couldn't come, but I know she's rehearsing right now, but she could always see the video, and I think it was a really worthwhile topic. So last month, I think, or now it's, well, sometime in the last, previous few meetings, Ruby, who's our student rep, you know, was interested in the topic of student mental health. The pandemic has had an impact on everyone's mental health and thinking about particularly our high school-aged students, both at Summit Academy and at the, at Amherst Regional High School. So we have a group of folks who are going to do a very brief overview of the work. I just want to like frame that, that I asked them to be very brief. They certainly have more to share than we have time for them to share it. So, you know, I appreciate their ability to talk about many, many things succinctly and briefly, which they do wonderfully. But we thought we would ask them to share that and then open it up for questions or comments. So with us tonight is Karen Peters from the Bright program at the high school, Jamie Knox from Summit Academy, Principal Siddique from the high school, Principal Slobin from Summit Academy, and there's Fay Brady, our Student Services Director. So I'll turn it over to whoever would like to start. I want to, just one more comment is, this has been tremendously important work for our students. You know, I think you can't read a newspaper on this and not read articles about the tremendous strain this has caused in all sorts of ways, in terms of impact on families who have been deeply personally affected by COVID themselves, or in terms of relatives, inability to see others, whether that's friends, family, all around. It's had a major impact on mental health, and I feel very fortunate that we have our team here, who, even from last spring, I think of some of the workshops we did. By "we," I mean "they." I just was the, you know, talking head who was asking questions and learning a lot by listening to be able to facilitate this work and to really support our students in very trying times. So I'm not sure who is starting us off, but I will turn it over to that group.
All right. So I think our plan was to start with high school, give a brief update. So Karen, if you want to get started, really appreciate it.
Sure, great. So I'm Karen Peters. I'm a school adjustment counselor, and I also coordinate the Bright program at the high school. I'm very glad to be here, and I'm really happy to see that wellness is on the agenda for the school committee. So like Dr. Morris said, we were asked to share some broad strokes around themes that our students and families and school community have been dealing with in this pandemic year, and then reflect a little bit and answer some questions. You know, and as we know, as we, as sort of to frame this conversation, we know that pre-pandemic, one in five teens have been diagnosed with a mental health condition. So that's just sort of where we're at from a baseline, and that data comes from the National Institutes of Mental Health. So what I want to share is that, you know, while we didn't do sort of a large-scale data collection with every student, we know that that one in five number is rising and is becoming more of a concern for our students. And supporting students in regulating the acute stress response that they've been living in, navigating relationships, and managing their capacity to sort of re-enter their world and all of their developmental tasks is something that we feel really committed to as a school community. So what are our students struggling with? What have we heard? What have guidance counselors heard and teachers? I just want to give you a sampling of some of the reasons for referrals that we've seen for mental health support this year. I'd say first and foremost is isolation, social anxiety, direct impact of COVID in families around grief and loss, struggle for stability in, for family well-being, and financial otherwise. Academic struggles, how to manage the, being a student in this remote world that we're living in. And as I mentioned, we know that these developmental tasks of high school students who right now are supposed to be increasing their independence, moving towards goals for themselves, has really been stunted. And again, we believe very strongly in our role to support health and well-being in addition to supporting students in learning. And we think that that's probably stronger now more than ever. So I just want to share a little bit about some of our tiered interventions that we've done. And, you know, of course, we've had to pivot a little bit in these remote platforms, whether it's walk-and-talks on the phone with mental health sessions, Google meets, and other creative ways that our guidance counselors and our mental health staff have really tried to meet the needs of students and families. We have really important partnerships with, in place with our local mental health agencies, ServiceNet, Community Support Options, River Valley. And we also work with a lot of the private therapists in the, in the area that we really rely on to make referrals for community-based support. So in the high school, what we typically offer is what we would call typical school adjustment counseling. This is my seventh year at the high school, and we've had more referrals for individual and group counseling than I've ever seen. So we've had over 50 referrals for individual student counseling, which is much higher than the number which typically hovers between 20, 25. So that feels very significant. We've also been really fortunate to have the support of graduate student interns from the Smith School of Social Work and UMass, as well as a wonderful partnership with River Valley that's provided us with a tier-two counselor who's been able to really get in there and meet student needs, you know, very rapidly. So individual short-term counseling, typically four to six sessions around some of those themes I've talked about, connecting families, connecting kids to resources, as well as building skills to help them in their daily experiences. We also offered three rounds of four to five sessions of group work. The topics here were teen wellness, stress management, and academic organization. I wish I could say that those groups were more, we had more interest in those groups. What we heard from a lot of students and families is, yes, we want this, but oh my gosh, we can't manage more screen time. And so really trying to figure out, how can we deliver the content, whether it's through a webinar or whether it's through other vehicles to get these skills and resources to students, is what we've really tried to put our heads together around. A couple other things that we've done, we introduced this concept of Wellness Wednesday, which I think is everywhere. UMass has a wonderful Wellness Wednesday program that we sort of tapped into, and we really look forward to expanding that next year. Right now, there's tips and strategies that we post in the weekly announcements, but we have some really good ideas around expanding that for next year for not only skills, but community building. At the higher levels of support, like for the program I run, which is Bright, which is a tier-three gen ed intervention, my referrals have been higher this year than typical. Notably, more ninth graders have been referred to me this year than I've ever seen before. So that, that's something that I'm paying attention to and not surprised by at all. In terms of, in addition to gen ed supports, there's also at the high school, mental health counselors who are doing special education counseling and consultation with teachers and families as well. What's next? I think that themes that we really hope to continue to build on, again, I brought up the idea that students and families living in this acute stress response place after being in a pandemic, being afraid of so many things, and really working at what skills can we, can we bring to all of our students and staff and families to help them regulate those things, whether it's mindfulness or emotion regulation or other things that we can, that we can infuse in the things that we're already doing. So I'm going to stop there and hope that I was brief enough. And I'm happy to answer questions when my good friend Jamie is done speaking next.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I just want to echo what Karen said. I'm really grateful that mental health was put on the agenda, and I think it's even more kind of delightful that it was brought up by the student representative. So I am Jamie Knox. I'm a clinical social worker, and I'm one of two clinicians at Summit Academy. You all know, this is our in-district public day high school for students with IEPs in grades eight through 12, who benefit from a therapeutic setting to further support and address their individual needs. Listening with Karen talk, I would say that I agree when she discusses what our students and families are dealing with in terms of presenting issues around isolation, increase in anxiety, feelings of depression, loss, grief, family struggle, not to mention academic challenges. So at Summit, we were, we did have pretty strong student engagement and attendance while we were completely remote, and still do currently for those students who continue to be remote. Myself and my co-clinician, Erin Edinson, began using Google Voice early on. It was an on-the-fly intervention that has paid dividends. It's been an amazing resource. So we've been able to use this to text families and students in the moment in their native language with the addition of the Google Translate app. And we've just been really grateful at how effective this, this intervention has been in the overall engagement of our, of our students at Summit, whether it was, you know, prompting a student to log in, partnering with a parent to help them log in when a parent was at work and we needed to text quickly, troubleshooting, or understanding why they weren't logging in, and then building interventions as needed for individual students and families. So every student at Summit is receiving, pre-COVID and currently, a minimum of weekly individual counseling between 30 and 90 minutes based on their IEP. Weekly small group, either DBT or CBT, which is part of our social emotional learning curriculum. We have weekly community meetings focused on community building, which is a huge part of who we are, coming together. Mindfulness practice, which is a cornerstone of our milieu. Teaching restorative practices, kind of rooted in circles, engaging with one another, managing conflict in the moment, talking through things, acknowledging one another, supporting one another. And we have a rotating repertoire of other groups that occur kind of monthly. So all of these interventions at Summit during this time and moving forward allow us to assess how the students are doing, contact and collaborate with our families when there's a change in their students' attendance or engagement, better assess in individual and group counseling sessions how our students are managing and feeling, and how to support them, and also to make appropriate referrals to community providers. The clinicians collaborate regularly with outpatient and community providers. So we're looking at other therapists. So we're looking at other therapists, case managers, primary care, DCF, et cetera, that our students and families are working with so that we can ensure as much as possible that the whole student new, needs are being addressed. And also clinicians at, at Summit consult with staff, pairs and teachers throughout the day as needed, which has become an ongoing daily all-staff Google chat. And I laugh because it's just, it's, it's a very intense and very effective way of communicating with one another. It's all day long. We're checking in about how a student is looking in the classroom. It's how I find out if somebody hasn't arrived, which prompts me to reach out to kids and families. And then we also consult weekly in, in scheduled weekly staff meetings about specific interventions and techniques that address and reinforce our students' social and emotional skill development. So I would say in closing, before we take some questions, that I am consistently buoyed by the resilience of our students of how they've adapted to the circumstances of this last year. We're continually looking for ways to encourage and help them channel their energy into gratifying pursuits, be it activism or finding creative outlets. And there's something real to be said about them realizing their own strength around how to adapt to adversity now and for the future. So that said, we do have concerns that we're being alert to. There's really long waiting lists and, and lack of access to mental health resources in the community right now. And I think that only underscores the importance of mental health interventions in the public schools right now. As for many families, we are kind of the main provider. You know, we don't know as yet potential kind of long-term impact for our high schoolers transitioning into young adulthood based on this last year. And as always, the crucial need to continue to be supportive of families who will continue to be under stress as the school and the world reopens. So yeah, we're remaining really vigilant and connected with our students and families around those things. So thank you. And Karen and I are happy to take any questions.
Mr. Stamel.
Yeah, being new to the committee, I was just curious how many students are enrolled at Summit and how, how it's determined who, who enrolls.
Sure.
I was gonna let Dave answer that, but you're welcome to go. And I was just trying to, you, you know, trying to spread the, spread the load to Dave. If you're okay answering that.
I'm sorry if people already know this, but I just.
No, no, that's a great question. It's a great question. Jamie knows it as well. So, so everybody that's at Summit is, has gone through the IP process. So they're all students on, on IEPs. And we're a day school, which means we're as, as far out on the least restrictive environment, which is a, a key term in, in special ed, as you can go publicly. So the next step is a private day school. And so we've done this and we've had a public day school in our system for many, many years. And it's looked in lots of different ways. And so that's, that just gives you the history of that. And we have about, right now, I think we have about 26 students. We also take in tuitioned in students from other communities and we've done that for years. And interestingly enough, that number has risen in the last, you know, six to eight months that people are looking for placements that they can't, but they want to be as close to the public school as possible. And we're one of those in our local community. And we've always been there for North Hampton, South Halley and others. And, and, and so that's what we offer. I, I, I just wanted just a real plug. My clinicians and Karen Peters have been just stalwarts. Just, I, I almost get emotional thinking about the level of work and commitment they have had towards our students every day of the week. Right? So every day of the week during vacations, every day of the week during summer. And it's not the way it has to be, but it's the way it needed to be. And they stepped up and, and it just, and it, and you see the difference. That's the key. You see the difference in the students. And I really appreciate that. And I couldn't not go on without saying that. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you for asking that question because I think it's always helpful for us to, in, in our community to be reminded of, of the role and uniqueness of Summit Academy. Are there other questions?
Mr. Demling.
Yeah. So thank you so much for this, for this talk. I, I love hearing from staff who are like on the direct front lines of this, this stuff. So it's really, adds a lot of color to the abstractness that we usually talk about at the, at school committee. So appreciate that. The, the two questions I had were, are there already specific resources, whether it's staffing or technology or something else, that you're thinking of would be really helpful in the coming years as we help kids recover from COVID? The specific reason I ask is that you, you may know that we have a, a certain amount of funds from federal stimulus dollars recently. It's about 1.6 million over a maximum of the next four fiscal years to spend specifically for things that COVID has impacted. And obviously, mental health supports is, is like right down that main street. So it doesn't have to be right now, you know, maybe, you know, as the coming weeks and months as you're thinking, but if you have ideas tonight, that, that's great. But it's, it's something we're really going to be trying to engage the community on and, and wanting to, to get the most impact for, you know, and this is definitely something that we want to be, be alerted to. The, the other thing, that's one question, if, if, if you have thoughts now. The other one is, is about referrals. And I'm just curious about, about the, the methods of how students at the region, the middle school and the high school are able to self-refer. Like, is it, is it, is it easy to drop in anonymously, like without stigma? I mean, obviously, you know, it's better than anybody that mental health still has, you know, too much of a stigma in society than it should. And we're obviously all working on that. And, but that's a socialization thing, right? And so I would imagine with some of these things like isolation and anxiety, it might not be the easiest thing in the world to take time out of your day, walk down to the guidance office to somebody maybe you don't know and say, hey, I have a problem. I need to talk to somebody about it. So if you could just talk about, about the, the opportunities that students have for that.
I, I can answer that one unless Mr. Siddique, you wanna, you want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I, I think that it's really important to address stigma and how we help our students and our faculty feel more comfortable, not only being uncomfortable, but letting people know they need some help. I, I think that our guidance counselors have done an incredible job, very similar to what Jamie described, making it much easier for students to make appointments, to be connected, whether it's through, hey, make an appointment from my, from our virtual website, or we're going to have this scheduled appointment already in place. Small groups that we try to offer in classes to talk about things like that and give students access to staff members. We certainly want to increase the visibility for students that it is not only okay, but really important health and wellness wise and academically to be addressing these things and to get more familiar with your, with how you work. Last year, right before COVID, unfortunately, we were right in the swing of doing what I think was a really cool seven-session group with a lot, with about 75 students in a partnership with one of our tier two programs, just about the teenage brain. And it brought so many other, so many students to sort of our, to the guidance office and to other people saying, hey, like, I want to talk about this, or I have some concerns, or I didn't know that I could do something about sort of building my ability to be more organized. I thought that I just, this is who I was. So providing that psychoeducation, whether it's through advisory, which we're really excited to plan for and we're already doing for next year, really doing that psychoed, I think is step one in helping students be accountable and understand who they are and what's happening in their brains and in their bodies and in their relationships. And then your first question, I, I'm so glad to know about that. And this is something that Mr. Siddique and Ms. Effor and the guidance counselors and, and I and Dr. Brady, we're, we're sort of all really talking about some of, there's been some really cool partnerships with the Bright Network and Desi and a local foundation or a statewide foundation. I'm sure Fay, you can talk about this a little bit more, but there are, there are some really exciting opportunities for integrating more of this mental health in, in tier one that we really want to take advantage of.
Yeah, thanks Karen. Summed it up really nicely. Honestly, don't have too much more to add to it, but that, like I said, summed up very nicely. Thanks.
I think Karen did a brilliant job. So, so in, in, in the, and not trying to make this too much longer. The only other piece that kind of came to mind as we're all talking is just, Mr. Demling, when you talk about, you know, the stigma, you know, the, the importance of the language from the district and from all of the adults and how we talk about kind of mental health and who accesses it. And I have been really proud of the way that, that our district has, has done that. You know, even, even in small ways, when, you know, Mike is able to, when Mike puts in blurbs about kind of the amazing thing Summit Academy is doing in the all-student newsletters, or we talk about the, the work that we're, we're doing at Summit, the really important work around kind of mental health and meeting kids where they're at and, and really trying to do away with, and I grew up in this community, you know, some stigma that still exists around, you know, who are students who access those most kind of the, the, a place like Summit Academy or used to be the, the South Amherst campus. And, and how we, we can kind of promote Summit Academy within the community and, and just talk about it. And so it, it, it also kind of starts at home with all of us and how we, and how we do those pieces. So it's an important piece.
Mr. Stamel.
Just prolonging it a little bit. So is Summit Academy in a separate building from the high school? And I'm wondering, can the kid, do the kids at Summit ever integrate with the high school? And are there ways to make them feel, you know, truly apart?
I can actually do that one. So that's a good thing. So I want to say it was two or three years ago time, you know, there's like weird vortex of the last 14 months that messes up how we remember what happened beforehand. But Summit Academy used to be on, right off Southeast Street. The building is still there. And several years ago, there were multiple factors that contributed to moving the Summit Academy over. So it is now a distinct part. It's located at the high school, but has a distinct wing in, in the high school building. And, you know, I think we could have a much longer conversation of how things have changed, you know, and how it's impacted some, you know, some students have enjoyed that and some students, it's been a harder transition. I'm not trying to be Pollyanna-ish, but about it, but one of the advantages, it does allow for more opportunities for integration in the way that you cite. You know, some of the reasons, just so, so you know, the history, Mr. Stamel, you know, there was retaining wall that was having a problem at Summit that was going to be hard to fix. There were a lot of facilities issues. And then there was a fiscal implication of having its own campus. So there's a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation. I really want to thank Dave, Jamie and the staff because they were critical in making that transition work. It's, it's easy for someone like me to go up here, you know, a school committee meeting and say it'll work. Much more challenging for people who are on the ground to actually make it work. And they did tremendous amount of individual work. Some of it's done as a group, but some of it's about individuals, you know, kids who were excited to go, got there, were like, oh my God, this isn't, this isn't, doesn't sound great anymore. And then we had some of the reverse, kids who were anxious about it and actually really enjoyed the experience of being in the same building as the high school. So right now it is in this, the building. It, it had a lot of facilities worked on and continues need some, some work that, you know, around HVAC system because of how we changed the classrooms to accommodate that. And I think the last thing I'll say on that one is, and Mr. Siddique and the high school staff also welcoming Summit was really critical because it's, it's one thing again to work out all those details. Another thing, how, how people feel. And even you can see it tonight in terms of Karen and Jamie, that there is, there are connections made, right? And there, you know, one of the advantages from the adult learning perspective is there are people teaching similar things or working on similar aspects. And the fact that they're down the hall versus across town can make a difference in terms of the professional culture as well. So you know, long-winded answer to your question, but I think it's a really important one. And it's in the not-so-distant past of, of the school committee who had to weigh lots of factors in making that decision.
I would just add one, a couple of things, actually. The mic's right on. You know, the notion of stigma, anytime you have a public day school and, and this school's been around for, believe it or not, more than 35 years. And, but it's changed in lots of different ways. It used to be an alternative school. And we're always fighting the stigma of what does it mean to go to that school? So the question you're asking is really important because the students that represent Summit Academy are the best and the brightest. And I mean that in figuratively and literally, right? You know, because these kids are doing incredible, we're going to have graduation on Friday and they're going to four-year colleges and they're going to the community and they're already in the community working. And sometimes all people think about in public day schools, that they're, they're the problem student or the behavioral student. That is an absolute killer. And we still battle that, even with the adults in our community, even with teachers at the high school. And it's hard. And so I don't want to just, you know, sugarcoat that. That is something that the school committee, and they did it and continue to step up for Summit Academy. We had a great, and that, this is years ago, Michael, and some, some people remember this, but we had two of our students represent who they were. And that is the best you can ever do. And so I, I invite people when we can, and people have come to Summit Academy, you know, and, and, and just to meet the students. They're just amazing. The art, art ability, the, the, the athletic ability, that academic ability matches everybody. And the thing that I love about our students the most is they're out there. They don't walk around with a veneer. They walk around just right there and it's something special. And so, so we're really proud of the students we have and we want and know the community is too. But that's something we're always going to work with. And, and we have to work it with our students. We have to change their frame. What does it mean to be a Summit Academy student? And when they go to graduation every year, they see what it means. It means to be resilient. It means to, in the face of real tough odds, to keep moving forward. And, and, and they do. And they learn and they build these skills. And, and it's just, it's wonderful that we as a community have kept a public day school because you know, it's, it's one of our gems. And I, I, you know, I just wanted, it's important. So thank you for the questions. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for, for the, for the passion and leadership as well. Any other questions? Not seeing any. So I really appreciate you all joining us tonight for this conversation. It was really helpful to sort of hear the frame of, of, of the challenges that our students are facing and the supports that they're getting through all of your work and quality. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. Yeah.
Take care, everybody. Thanks.
We'll move on to our next item, which is discussion of consideration of a district indigenous lands acknowledgement. And this agenda item was proposed by Ms. Lord. And so I will turn it over to you, Ms. Lord, to contribute to the topic.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank Chair McDonald for being eager at the suggestion of a land acknowledgement and putting this discussion on the agenda. Part of what drives me in this comes from a quote by Dr. Shirley Whitaker in her movie Ashes to Ashes. She's one of our own and her son graduated from our district, school district, a little while back. In the movie Ashes to Ashes, she throws a memorial service for the victims of horrific murder by lynching, most of whom were denied a funeral or service. In the movie, she also works with the survivor of a lynching attempt, Winfried Rembrandt. Wanted to bring his name up. Thank you, Winfried. Dr. Whitaker says that as a doctor, she needs to know the medical history in order to provide a treatment for healing. She likens that to this country. In this country, if we don't acknowledge our history, we're not ever going to truly be healed. The raw, ugly, hurtful truth, so that we can heal and hope to create a country that isn't still replicating much of the harm in a different way. I'm grateful this district voted to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day a few years back as opposed to Columbus Day. I'm grateful to the school committees that have banned or are fighting to ban Indian mascots. In the 1600s, the decapitated head of an Indian earned someone's 30 shillings. So when I see some of the mascots, especially a head, it's traumatic and painful reminder of that violent past. A land acknowledgement is but a first step. If we stop there, the action becomes performative and harmful. In full transparency, I would like a land acknowledgement to be a step in a multi-year journey that may involve looking into the curriculum. We used to teach the indigenous past and present to prevent erasure and misrepresentation. What books do we have? What books do we have available? Are they deficit-based and only told from the side of the conqueror? We have amazing librarians, so I know that's not the case, but what more books could we add? How do we connect with local elders and members of the Indigenous community? We have a restorative justice practice that uses circle practice, and that has been an Indigenous practice for thousands of years. Are we honoring that and connecting with local elders around that? How do we support our students who are Indigenous? Last year at graduation, a mother spoke to me about the heritage skulls, skulls some of the students wear. And she asked, why didn't we have an Indigenous one? Where's the space for us to have someone get a skull of their tribal colors? And are we even having these discussions? So that's what, like, the land acknowledgement to me is the first step in a very important step towards us embracing our anti-racist, our multicultural truth that we're living in. If we decide to go further, I have tons of resources that I can condense and share with everyone. And yes, if you have any questions or any thoughts, I think, is that what we do next? I'll, actually, I'll throw it back to Chair McDonald because she knows the deal.
You were doing, you were doing really well. You, that's all I would say is, um, thank you for that, that helpful introduction. And as, as Ms. Lord acknowledged, when she first proposed this, we, we talked about it just to educate myself about sort of where, you know, what other districts are doing and, and what this, what this could look like for our district. So I, I've learned a lot in probably the last couple of months when you first proposed this topic. Um, I think that's the discussion. So we're not trying to move to any sort of decision right now. We think it's really to understand sort of what the temperature is from the, from the committee about wanting to explore a land acknowledgement as well as, as this Lord described, some of the other, other ideas. You, you, you had your hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't give the basic. A land acknowledgement is where we take a moment to say, this land belonged to these tribes that were here first. Just in case, we're throwing around that word and I realize I didn't stop and just say, we are acknowledging we're on stolen land and here's who it belonged to before it was taken.
Mr. Stamel.
Any particular land? Is it the country we're talking about? Is it the, our, our general area, Amherst, where the school is?
I was envisioning our district. I know it's Nipmunk and a couple of other tribes that were here first, but.
Mr. Demling.
So I really appreciate this being on the agenda because I'd never heard of the concept before it was on our agenda. And I, I really like the, I, so I still very much novously learning of the basics of it. I really like the idea, though, I like how, how localized it is, that, that in, in talking about, because we're the Amherst Pond Regional School Committee. We're not, you know, the state of Massachusetts or, or anything greater than that, right? And so, you know, so we have our own zone of, zone of focus. And to understand and learn what, who those tribes, I mean, you just mentioned the names, but I'd never heard that before. So that, that's, that would be a really great educational learning opportunity, I think, for our students, for, for our community. I could certainly imagine engaging students with this. This would be a great opportunity, I think, for school committee collaboration with, with student. So I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure there must be some teachers that are passionate about this topic as well, who could, who could maybe tie in some projects or, or some community groups. But, and, and I'm glad we're not voting on something today because I, I think Ms. Lord mentioned, you know, this shouldn't just be performative, like, oh, here's some statement that we blow by and just all say yay. It's that it's, it's a means towards, towards an end of, of building awareness. And, you know, I mean, just generally speaking, it is uncomfortable to be, you know, living in a, a space that originally isn't ours, or at least, at least it's not mine. And, and struggling with that and coming to terms with that. So I, I definitely am into having this be the first step and, and, and putting some more effort into it.
Mr. Stamel.
Yeah, I mean, I love, I'm very supportive of the whole idea. I would, you know, in discussing this, personally, I would stay away from words like stolen land, which might be totally true. I'm not saying it's not true, but if we were to support this, I think, I mean, I would most likely favor language that was, hmm, I'm not sure how to say it. I don't want to say neutral because it's not a neutral topic. But I don't think it's a good thing to politicize in any way. I think it's a good thing to make a statement about it in a way that shows that we recognize and are appreciative of the people who were here and whose land we're on. But I'm uncomfortable with the word stolen.
When I did, was poking around and looking at sort of what other districts and other regions have done. This is actually something that's really, I don't know if it's legislated, like required in Canada, but across Canada, schools are, and I don't know that it's every single school day, but sort of like for some of us older folks here, when we were required to say the pledge of allegiance at the big start of school every day, it's, it's the equivalent and, and more. And there's lots and lots of examples of different phrasings and, and wording depending on the location and relationship. And one of the things, I think it might be useful to share some of the information. There's lots just from, from within Canada, but also from, from US organizations that have, have guides for how to approach this. And I think as Ms. Lord described, you know, the key is connecting with elders in, in the region or area to define and collaborate together on defining what that acknowledgement could look like and sound like. Again, not sort of, to not be the group that sort of decides how we're going to acknowledge something that isn't ours or wasn't ours. And Ms. Lord, you have your.
I do. I just wanted to speak for a moment to the discomfort in certain words. And I, I didn't use the word genocide because that makes a lot of people comfortable, but that's what happened. And so I know we might struggle with calling it a stolen land or, or genocide. But these are truths and these are realities. And how can we be, like, not, how can we sit in that discomfort and help us grow into a loving peace and a healing around that? Whew, sorry. It's overwhelming, but every year I do the day of mourning where the Indigenous, a lot of Indigenous come together and they tell their stories. And there's still so much pain and discomfort in the Indigenous community that I can't make myself comfortable by wrapping it in words that sound nicer or like, hey, we borrowed your land. So I, I understand what you're saying and it will turn a lot of people off to use words like stolen or genocide. But I have to honor the pain, the history and the truth, and then the healing that can come from just being raw. So I just, I wanted to acknowledge that I heard what you said, but I also need to push back a little about my use of words and why I go there. Thank you.
Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to double down on that because I, I feel like if we're doing this genuinely, we need to represent what genuinely happened, right? Like, we need to use words like forced removal from land, these sorts of things, stolen land, et cetera, et cetera. Because that's what it is. We also need to figure out ways, so we're, we're an educational body here, right? We also need to tie in those sorts of things because these people, they have concepts of education in, in these sorts of things. Like, we actually need to represent who it was, like specifically, that was here. And pardon me for like actually literally reaching for a voice right now, but I'm kind of under the weather here. I don't, I have a lot of words to say about the topic. I just don't have the wind to do it right now.
Ms. Stanser.
I would just like to say that I support this. I support the language. And I would be very interested, you said that there are resources. And I personally would be interested in knowing about some of those things.
Ms. Stanser.
I'd also just like to state my support for us moving forward with this and especially bringing in folks with connections to the Native peoples who were here before and students or other outsiders outside of our committee who might have, I guess the best word would be stakeholders, people who, who are connected to this issue more directly. Thank you, Ms. Lord, for bringing it to the committee.
I'm, I'm here in general assent to, to moving forward with this from, from the committee. So I'm just going to pause to see if there's any objections comes up. And so I'm wondering if a, a next step might be, if there's somebody who would like to partner with Ms. Lord in, in sort of coming up with and developing that process for how we, how we will move forward and sort of develop that, some ideas that then the committee can consider at a future meeting. Does that sound? Ms. Stanser. You volunteer to?
Yes, I do. I volunteer.
Great, so I think some next steps is, we'll share some, some resources for the full committee to, to get, build our understanding of this. And Ms. Stanser and Ms. Lord will take this and work together and coming back to us with a proposal or ideas. Great, any further comment? Okay, so we will move on to the next item, which is an update, oh, sorry, stick one. Discussion on the funding support that we, that the district receives from our town colleges and universities. And I think this is, we'll start with just understanding sort of what we currently receive from the various institutions. And I think Dr. Morris, you could share something.
Yep, so in terms of the current funding that we receive for the more years than I've been in this role, so more than five, we received $75,000 from Amherst College. That typically is went to support some work in the family center and is primarily used at the regional level. The other major institution in town, UMass, last year, the year before, again, yours get a little funny, had not historically had a funding stream that went directly to the schools. However, in support, and I want to thank the town for supporting this as well. It was 100, it, so it gets a little complicated, but at the current time, it's $185,000. What gets a little complicated is only 15,000 of that comes to the regional schools. The rest goes to the Amherst Public Schools, and that's based on the number of students who attend our districts, who live in off-campus housing. And that is skewed much more heavily at the elementary level in Amherst than it is at the regional level. And I think the additional wrinkle is right now, the place where off-campus students live, excuse me, yeah, no, where, where UMass students live in UMass-supported houses, which is not taxed, no longer exists right now. No one lives there. So this is Puffton, I think that's the right name, or North, I'm going to mess it up, sorry. It's one of those days where the words aren't with me, but Carrie or Peter will remember, I'm sure. They're nodding their, they're nodding their heads that they will. But in any case, the place, because there's actually more than one, it's just primarily, and I think it's North Village. The place where UMass students live in tax-exempt housing is getting rebuilt. And I want to publicly state, I appreciate that that funding stream is continuing despite the fact that there are no students right now, or very few students living in tax-exempt housing with children who attend the Amherst Public Schools. Because that's a two-year project, but they committed for three years. And this is the second year, and so we appreciate their support. That's not to detract from the larger conversation the committee has, but that is the current situation. To summarize, I'll do much more succinctly, thanks Carrie, is that we received $75,000 from Amherst College, and that goes directly to the region. And the regional school district receives $15,000 as part of a larger sum that comes from UMass that is making, acknowledging the tax-exempt housing where we have students living, but no taxes coming into the town. So I think that's a summary you wanted to give. Sorry, that was a little circular way of describing it, but that's, that's our current status.
Mr. Stamel.
Is it 75,000 per year or was that a one-time?
It is, it is yearly. We do ask for it. It, it's not in perpetuity, it's not a forever commitment, but it has worked that way. And we have a commitment for the next two years for that to remain in place. And, and for UMass, it was a three-year commitment made a year and a half ago. So again, that'll potentially have to be renegotiated. And that gets a little, you know, when I, I think it's worth talking about the complexity. It gets a little more complicated because when North Village is redone, it presumably is larger and it was done based on a formula, a tax-exempt housing that will need to be reassessed as the North Village comes, the new North Village comes online, I think it's in 2022. Could be wrong in that, but I believe that's a year it's supposed to come online.
Ms. Stanser.
Um, Dr. Morris, so I'm not sure I quite understand about the 185,000 from UMass. You said about 15,000 goes to the regional schools. And so that would leave, what, 170,000? And that goes directly to the elementary schools in Amherst? Or it goes to the town? I don't quite understand that.
Sure, so the mechanics are that it goes to the town and then that directly goes to the schools. So it is, there is one step in the way, but the town of Amherst has committed to having those, since it's related directly to school funding for that fund, those funds to be directly applied to the schools. Sorry, I should have been more clear about them.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, um, just, so just to put a finer point on what Dr. Morris said, it subsidizes the town of Amherst's support for Amherst Public Schools. It's not, we don't get the town of Amherst, like, say, town of Amherst says 3% for service departments. We don't get 3% plus 170K at the elementary level. It, it reduces the amount of, of support that the town of Amherst pays to, to run the public schools. Which, for the school committee is an important point, but we're talking about the elementary, but.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so a separate point. Yeah, so I mean, so I asked for this to be on the agenda, so I appreciate it. I really just wanted to broach the topic because I feel like it's an important, but awkward conversation to begin because what we're talking about is volun, currently is voluntary contributions from our, from the colleges and universities in our community, right? And, and, and there is active discussion across the state right now about whether or not these organizations that have, some of whom have many millions of dollars of tax-exempt property, shouldn't be pay, if, if, there's an open question discussion, but should they be paying more to their towns? And should they be required to pay more to their towns? And there's some bills currently being advocated for at the state level that would, that would give municipalities the ability to require colleges and universities to, to pay more than, than what they currently do. It's called, so, so right now, the, there are different agreements between universities and local towns across the state, Harvard and Williams and whatnot. And they're generally referred to as pilot payment in lieu of taxes, which is a fancy way of saying that a voluntary informal agreement has been reached between the municipality or school district and, and the college or university. And just from some groups that I've attended recently on the topic, the, the amounts that these pilot agreements are vary quite a bit. And they're not always followed through on. About two-thirds of the time, they're, they're not. Or rather, about a third of the time, they're not. Meaning if you look at, say, a pilot agreement that X, X school is supposed to pay $100,000 a year, it's, it's, it works out to about two-thirds of that because there's, there's an enforcement mechanism. So this was really about, you know, is, is there an opportunity to maybe rekindle some of these discussions with our local universities? And it's interesting because I think the schools that we're talking
rekindle some of these discussions with our local universities? And it's interesting, because I think the schools that we're talking about are in much different positions. You know, so we have Hampshire College, which is, we haven't mentioned yet, but we probably all know, they were on the brink of going out of existence very recently. So they've had very, very difficult financial situations. And they're a much smaller school than the other two we're talking about. UMass is, of course, larger, and we have the agreement, but it's a very limited definition, right, based on off-campus housing. And does not take into account the other benefits. There's a lot of benefits from, to, that the university gets from being in Amherst that they go far beyond off-campus housing that they get, they get from the public schools, right? If you want, it's a, the excellence of the Amherst Public Schools is a big, a big attractor to an employer, and UMass is the biggest employer. And then Amherst College, you know, is, I think, a focal point, because they, they have a very large amount of resources, to put it bluntly. You know, they have a large endowment, and when you compare them to a school like Williams that has a similar level endowment, Williams has historically, and I think very publicly in recent years, supported their public schools, because they've, they've talked about how it's part of their mission to support excellence in public schools and the benefits they get from public schools. They've contributed literally millions of dollars to renovations of high schools and elementary schools, and they pay, I think it's about 200K a year to their local community. So I just thought, as we emerge from this pandemic, and, you know, we have certainly a number of major capital things on the horizon that our region would love to get to, track and whatnot. But it might be an opportunity to go back to Amherst College and revisit and say, you know, is $75,000 the right amount, or is there an opportunity here to talk about what Amherst College values and what regional schools provide? And is there something, you know, that we can, is there an update that is appropriate? So that was the reason for prompting the discussion.
Ms. Kenny.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question about Amherst College? Is Amherst College that funding handled the same way as the UMass funding? So like, it supplements what the town pays?
So I, it's a hard, I mean, it all supplements. It goes directly to the district. There's no intermediary. So that would be a difference.
So so if Amherst says, you know, we need this many dollars for a level of funding, therefore, it's the, what was it, like, 3%, 2%, something like that? That it's the 2% in addition, or that $75,000 is included in that 2%?
So at the current time, that's part of our operational budget. You know, because we've counted on it, so, I mean, I suppose it's a philosophical, right, question, because we do, it pays things, it pays for things every year that if all of a sudden Amherst College was to say, no, we're not doing the $75,000, we would have to realize a reduction in that. And what it's paying for in the family center, and that money would have to come from somewhere. So I don't think it applies as much in terms of what the towns are giving us. It is, it does supplement whatever, because it's a regional level, whatever the increase is, but we, it's part of our operating budget at this point, because it's been so durable for six or seven years.
Okay, but it's not included as like what the town, like, it sounds, maybe I'm misunderstanding. It sounds like the money from UMass is included as the money in, within that money from Amherst. But Amherst College is not included the same way. Amherst College comes straight to the region, and that's it, it's separate money.
So let me say it differently. So I think, you know, Peter, you can correct me if I'm misstating what you shared, but so in terms of the funds that come from UMass, the $15,000, that benefits the district, it doesn't necessarily lower the assessment for the town of Amherst. It's not, you know, it's not like, oh, that just lowers the assessment for Amherst, and everyone else has to pay more as a result. It goes, there's not that additional step. It just, it goes to the town, and then we would essentially get a check, in this case, for $15,000 from the town of Amherst to support the regional budget, not to support the Amherst portion of the regional budget.
Okay.
Does that hope? It's not, I'm not, I'm not having a great night talking, so luckily, we'll say about you all, so.
I'm not either. It's all good.
So can I just reframe that? So that, that money would show up not in, when we review budgets, or when the public is looking at our budgets, that wouldn't show up in the appropriations or the appropriated budget. That shows up as, as other revenue. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Ms. Spitzer.
Thanks. So I want to start off by acknowledging how much the town gets from having the university and colleges located here, so I don't worry that my comments are going to come off as being against the university or against Amherst or Hampshire. And so it's none of those things. I think, so there are two things I want to say. One is, I'm frustrated with the, I think this is all rooted in the fact that the way our public schools are funded in the United States is through property taxation. And so when you have these large nonprofit public institutions, it could be a hospital, it could be, you know, a university, in our case, it takes a lot of land off of the property tax rules for our districts. So as we're facing more acute budgets, this is becoming a bigger issue, and I think it's worth addressing. I'm, I, I know we get a lot, you know, from the universities in terms of, you know, things that we can't, you know, can't count. But I do think that we do provide also on, you know, less tangible benefits to, to the schools. And for example, you know, we have students from the university who come into our schools and receive some other training in our schools. Correct me if I'm wrong about any of this, but, um, so I think it's the right thing to talk about. I guess my concern is, I don't think we have much leverage. We, we don't have, you know, I would be welcome to accept whatever funds the university or in the Amherst College would be willing to accept, but I I want to point out, Amherst College recently, one of the students, and you know, published an op-ed putting pressure on the college to consider increasing the amount of support that they give to the local community. And I think in the ways that we can support those types of efforts, I am all for it. I think if there are town counselors who want to get involved, or state reps, or any other kind of other stakeholders in the community who want to also work together, because I don't think it can just come from the school committee. I think we need to, and Peter, you know, it sounds like you're doing this, getting involved, and I'd be happy to, you know, work on efforts going forward to do this. I just don't know. I think we could provide information to these efforts. I think we could provide amplification of their message as well. Like, I think it's interesting, I don't know if anybody heard from the Amherst College students who wrote, but I'm, you know, in the, in the district, but it's interesting that this kind of popped up in, in the, in the college newspaper. The other thing that I'm going to point out, which is kind of getting into the weeds, is that I'm, I have a lot of concerns about the way that the UMass is calculating how much. And I know this was something that was decided long before, and we engaged with the Bonneville Institute for this report, and it was something, I think, that the other members of town government were working on from Amherst. But it seems to me like it shouldn't be about how many students you have in the district. It should be more about the amount of land that you're essentially taking offline from increasing our town's revenue. And, you know, Amherst College doesn't have a lot of their, you know, students have, I'd be surprised if it's more than, you know, just a handful of students from Amherst College who might have students within our district. And so if we use that kind of logic and apply it across the board, it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So I would be in favor of thinking about ways we can partner with others to increase the amount of money that our towns get from these institutions, but I'd also want to, you know, consider trying to move away from this idea that you only need to contribute to the town if you actually have students with students in the district, if that makes sense. So, thank you, and that's, those are my thoughts.
I think I'll just add to that, I share that, that the same concern as Ms. Spitzer, about sort of philosophically, it's, it's about sort of being a member of the community as opposed to paying for services that the schools are providing. And, you know, much as we benefit as a school district in a town from the presence of the colleges and university in the town, so do those colleges and universities benefit from us, from the town having a quality, a high-quality and attractive public school system, right? So their ability to attract faculty and staff that are top-notch is dependent and related to the quality of our public schools. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a co, we both, both groups benefit from the presence of the other, and in that sort of collaborative spirit of sort of what's best for our overall community is sort of how I would approach the conversation. And I agree how much leverage do we have? This is not a new conversation. And so things haven't changed, other than the legislation at the state level. And I feel like that's, in my mind, that's probably our strongest option or approach is to, is to partner with our representatives in the State House and the Senate to progress that legislation in that avenue. Mr. Dumbling.
Yeah, so, I mean, these are really good points. You know, the, the point of leverage is, is, is an interesting one, and it is the fulcrum of why this is awkward. Right? Because if, if the, if some of the bills that are currently in the works became law, then, then it would, it wouldn't be a choice, right? You wouldn't, you'd have the leverage of law. You could do whatever you like. So I, so while I think that that is worthy of pursuit, I think the other opportunity here, you know, to try and be as fair as possible to Amherst College, right, who's currently giving us $75,000 without having to, is, is, you know, it's like, we don't, we don't currently know how they're feeling about this right now. And it's, and, you know, because they've already given us money, it's, of course, not a new conversation, but I would call it a dormant conversation. It's, it's certainly never come up on, since I've been on the committee. And, you know, they're busy, they have things to attend to, and, and management, and people change, and, and so this, it, I'm, the idea of a discussion isn't so much to, you know, let's have some Machiavellian, high-political-pressure campaign to force their hand. It's more, hey, let's, 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 let's open the door to an opportunity, right, to have a conversation and say, hey, Amherst College, you obviously benefit from being in the town. We benefit from having you here. You obviously have a very publicly stated mission about equity, and we have a public school that services a lot of high-need students. You know, we're a big draw for your, for staff. Is, is this something that, you know, you want, want to engage in? Just, and just give them the the opportunity just to have that conversation. You know, and I'm also, you know, want to be sensitive to that, even though Amherst College clearly has a large endowment, it's, the devil is always in the details of these things, right? And it's, I don't want to make this so simplistic that like, oh, they're rich, therefore, we should use their endowment as a checkbook to fund our public schools. That's not like where I'm going with this. It's more, it's more when you compare to other pilot agreements, Williams and then some other places out, out west, you know, we're, we're quite the outlier in terms of the level of support. And so it's, it's an opportunity to just kind of explore that, I think.
Ms. Spitzer, did you have a hand up again?
Just a quick follow-up question. When you brought in the example of Williams, you mentioned that they had funded specific capital projects in part. Is that, so to me, a pilot is sort of, I'm thinking of a steady amount, but I'm wondering if maybe just the gallant with strategy, with, with potentially, would, would capital projects be something that you'd envision looking to our community partners for support in a way that hasn't been done in the past? I'm thinking of fields or other types of large-ticket items.
Mr. Dumbling.
I mean, yeah. I think, I think it's all on the table, right? So, so the Williams, they, they helped rent or over, they contributed over a million dollars. Actually, it was, it was five million, I'm sorry, five million to help renovate Mark Graylock, and then 1.1 million to to help renovate an elementary school. And then in addition to those one-time capital expenses, they contribute about 200,000 a year in operational, in like the pilot. So, so that's just one example from the other pilot agreements that I've looked at. They run the gamut of variations of that. And, you know, you bring up a great point, you know, our region obviously has a very urgent need for the track and the fields investment that's going to be very difficult to do for given the capital demands of our member towns, particularly, particularly Amherst. And what they're trying to do in the next five years. So, so yeah, I think, I think all that's on, on part of the conversation, right? I think that's, and, and who knows how far either one of those threads would get, but, you know, we wouldn't, won't know what's possible unless we, unless we look for it, I guess.
Any other thoughts, comments? Do we, do we have a next step coming out of this discussion? I mean, I've heard lots, lots of support for the idea of pursuing the support for and advocating for that pilot legislation, which I will note, I believe that exempts public institutions, tax-exempt institutions, so that would not impact UMass. As I recall the meeting of that. So it's private institutions over a certain amount of loss of exempt property tax. Any other sort of ideas on next step? Do we want to come back to this at a future conversation? Mr. Dumbling.
I, just the general next step I thought of was either Dr. Morris, or Chair McDonald, or some other individuals that I'm not thinking of who might be more appropriate. Just reaching out to Amherst College, our points of contact over there, who, who set this, this, this gift up, that they currently have to our region. And just, you know, seeing if they're open to having a conversation, I guess. I'm not, I don't really have any well-formulated plan beyond, beyond that, but I'm, you know, certainly interested to hear what Dr. Morris has to say, and.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'd appreciate, I'm happy to be part of that conversation. I think, given that they've communicated with Dr. Slaughter and I, and myself already, on their existing gift, I think it'd be helpful if the school committee, not Mr. Dumbling in particular, or however it works out, but took the lead on it. I'm happy to be part of those conversations, but I just, I'm a little concerned about the optics of me accepting a gift and then seeming like I don't want to accept a gift. And that was done without school committee, right? That wasn't, uh, you know, I think, I think school committee is really clean on that. That's not something that we, you know, talked about openly, or that there was a school committee vote on, but again, I'm happy to be part of any conversation, but I think if the communication came from the committee, I think it would feel more comfortable to me. I think it has a better chance of being successful.
So I'm happy to do that if the committee wishes that I do that. Seeing smiles and nods, so I will, I will move forward, and I'll connect with you, Dr. Morris, on, on some of the stuff. Ms. Spitzer, did you have another comment?
I was just curious, because we always read out loud gifts, and I think we're talking about this as a gift, but it must not be structured as a gift. Otherwise, we'd probably be reading at the end of the meeting, an acceptance of. So is it structured as a grant? Is it structured as? So I'm just curious, because we're talking about it as a gift, but we went, we read most of our gifts.
Yep, so I will have Dr. Slaughter respond to you about how that's coded. And he can send an email later this week.
Great question. Okay, if there's no other comments or thoughts on that, then we'll move on. So next up, we have the updates and discussion from our member towns. If, if there's any updates on plans regarding sixth grade to the middle school. So Ms. Stanser.
I can just say that at the last Pelham School Committee, we did decide to open the door to talk about it, that it was felt that it would be appropriate to have the discussion. decide to open the door to talk about it, that it was felt that it would be appropriate to have the discussion.
And I'll just share that the Amherst School Committee also is doing that. And there's, I believe Mr. Harrington and Ms. Spitzer were working on an engagement plan that the Amherst School Committee will hear at our next meeting next week. So that's the quick update from Amherst. Mr. Stammel?
The non-update from Leverett is that we've had three regional meetings and we, before we're having our next meeting, which is next Monday. So we still have not met. And we'll be having, that's on the agenda for Monday.
Mr. Sullivan?
Oh, sure. So there's no, no change in Chutesbury, that Chutesbury be holding on to its students. But we are very happy to open the door up or kick it open or whatever it is for anyone else that would like to put their sixth graders in there. Fill that space up.
Mr. Stammel?
So this is for Steve in there. So does that mean that the, the school committee in Chutesbury has, has decided or voted to keep their sixth graders? I mean, is that a firm decision you've already made? Just curious.
Well, it, it's, you know, this is my seventh year on this committee, so that I've been part of the discussion every time that it comes up. And yeah, it hasn't changed that we've never taken a vote one way or the other. It's always just been understood that at this point, we wouldn't even consider it.
Any other comment? Mr. Demling?
Dr. Morris, in terms of like engagement process, do you feel like now that we've had this update, is, is the next kind of bus driver, the elementary districts? In other words, is our, is our work here done for the moment in terms of this? Or, or in terms of public engagement, is this going to be? Like, we've already decided, okay, the door's open if y'all want to explore it, and it's logistically feasible and whatnot. So at, at the region level, are we kind of on pause until the, the feeding elementary districts get back? I'm just trying to organize my brain in terms of, do I think of this as a regional elementary topic in the coming months?
Yeah. So I think, can't give you a binary answer on that. So I apologize. I think the reality is that until an elementary district comes with a real plan of engagement, they may want to partner with you. It may be an opportunity to have perhaps even a joint, you know, there are going to be some joint meetings for other reasons this spring, and I think that may make sense. I think, I think you're right. I think that at this point, the elementary, to use your metaphor, the elementary districts are driving the bus, but I wouldn't say the region's not on. They're just, you know, a couple of seats back watching, seeing what's happening. They're like the bus monitor. Because at the end of the day, the reality is, you know, the elementary districts could want to, and the terms might not be suitable at the regional level. So I think at this point, you know, I think the continued engagement, like updates like this are going to be really important. And perhaps at one of those joint meetings, if we're mapping out engagement, which I think, I think we will. I think the likelihood that we will is high. I think that's where the region needs to sort of get back involved. But I think at this point, it's more in the observer offering feedback from a, from a regional level. Because we're, it's not entirely clear yet that we have a, an elementary district that is desiring to send, being open and wanting to do it are two really different things. And I think there's some point in between those two things of like, yeah, we're interested, and yeah, we want to do it, where I think the region needs to weigh in. But I think we're not quite there in terms of what I've heard from the elementary districts. We may be there by the end of the month of wanting to plan some, some joint engagement, but I don't think that we're there quite yet.
Mr. Stammel?
I'm pretty sure this question is real premature, but, you know, just trying to figure out what a discussion might look like in Leverett at our school committee. So if, if, if X number of towns, if, if some towns chose to send their sixth graders to middle school and Leverett and Chutesbury or some other towns didn't, at, at some point, would there be some kind of curriculum alignment? Would there be some kind of coordination between or among sixth grade teachers, you know, at the middle school and at individual schools? I mean, that's, that's one issue in my mind.
Dr. Morris?
So we currently struggle with that. And I think one of the advantages perhaps of having sixth grade in the middle school, and I'm not going down a road of saying we should do it, is that there'd be more opportunities to align the curriculum. And not just between our member towns, but, you know, between the three schools in Amherst even. There are some challenges with that. So, you know, I think, as I think, maybe I mentioned last time, Superintendent Colkeen has a lot of experience with this, more than me frankly, in her work in Union 28, because she does one of her other elementary districts in Union 28 sends students to a six through eight middle school, but sends them at seventh grade. So I think that'd be a great conversation to have at the Leverett School Committee. I'm certainly happy to participate in whatever makes sense. But I learned a lot talking to her about how they've made that work well, and it wasn't really working, I must speak for her, but how they've improved the situation from when she came in, and they've made some very intentional decisions around what it means as a seventh grader to enter a six through eight middle school in seventh grade. So we're very, in my opinion, we're very fortunate to have her in general, because I like her a lot, but also we're very fortunate to have her experience because this exact phenomenon currently exists in Union 28. So I think it'd be a great thing to bring up in Leverett. Again, I'm happy to attend any meeting or, you know, to connect with her offline like I typically do on that topic.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, so Gene, I was wrong about one thing. We have discussed one piece of this, and it comes up every single time, and everybody in town who knows about it, it, they ask about, how does the assessment change? If somebody did put their sixth grade in the school?
Dr. Morris?
Yep. So there's two ways to think about it, and I'm not proffering advice or feedback on them. One of them is to change the regional agreement, which would have a direct impact on assessment methods and, and things like that, and assessments. The other way is a rental agreement where town or towns who want to have their sixth graders in provide a financial support to the region for rental of space and access to staff members that would cut across a six through eight middle school, such as a nurse, custodial staff, you know, I mean, there, there's some question marks in there, but it's clear that custodial staff and nurses would, would be cutting across those. So I think there's different ways to do it. And again, that's where the region would want to jump in with some of its thoughts about how to do that. I think, you know, that's probably as far as I should go now until we know more of who's seriously considering it. But hopefully that's helpful in just giving some context, Mr. Sullivan, of different ways it could be addressed financially.
Okay. So when we come back to future agenda planning, we can talk about sort of our, our next steps in, in this, this ongoing discussion. Any more thoughts or questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to our next topic, which is a discussion. We talked about wanting to talk, look at our subcommittee structure and, and our policies. Any, any conversation about our subcommittees actually needs to refer back to, to looking at our policies. And what do, what did we commit ourselves to doing with regard to subcommittees? I'm going to share my screen because I don't think that this, this sort of compilation showed up in the packet, the public packet. So for folks watching at home. Just to be clear again, this is a discussion. We're not looking for a decision on anything other than a decision on where we want to go as, as next steps coming out of this. Okay. So can you see my, my screen? And so what I wanted to, what I want to start with is just looking at what our current policy is and, and sort of how that compares to sort of, not just a model policy, but also surrounding districts. Because ours is a little bit different. And then look at our current subcommittees and appointments and, and structure. And then just have discussion. And I, I shared some idea starters or thought starters for that discussion. And when we get there, and then just finish with where we want to go from there. Now I do, I lost my cursor. There we go. Okay. So this, this links to our online policy. So for folks watching at home, if you want to click into that, it's on our school committee website under the policy, and it's, if you search for BDE, you'll find it. But this is a, a quick summary. The school committee may create subcommittees as needed. So we, we decide what, which subcommittees we want. The members are appointed by the chair of the committee, and the members can, may include residents, staff and students as desired. Again, that's up to the school committee and the, and as appointed by the chair. The school committee provides the subcommittee its charge, its function and its duties. Subcommittees make recommendations to the school committee, but they don't act on behalf or for the school committee. The school committee may decide at any time to dissolve the subcommittee or to reappoint it. And as our subcommittee members all know, open meeting law applies to all subcommittees. And what I put in the, in that, that packet was just a link to model policy, because if you look around, and I looked at also at other districts around, across the state, just poking them, there's, there's some key differences in our strat, in our policy versus others. And not, not a value judgment, just sort of calling out where there are differences. So one of the key things is that most other policies have a time limit. Their annual appointments, and it doesn't mean that members don't serve longer than one year, but just that, that it is a discussion every, every year. We were in the practice of doing that, even though our policy doesn't actually stipulate that. So I will say that we were in the practice of doing that. We, the other habit is that if we have standing subcommittees, that those are actually listed within the policy. That there aren't standing policies, standing subcommittees that aren't described within, within policy and with their specific functions and duties. In the most cases, it does, it specifically calls out not including task forces or advisor committees. And some actually specify this, but it's implied in most other policies that the subcommittee is school committee members and not sort of non-school committee members. And I mention that because then it, that's, that's why they call out that it doesn't include task forces, advisory committees. Advisory committees is where it's, in that model policy and in most other districts in the state, an advisory committee is where it's designed intended intentionally to be, include members other than school committee members. So whether that's staff, students, community members, residents, parents, et cetera. And those also are typically annual appointments, appointments. Slight difference between the advisory committee and the subcommittee is that the specific tasks are assigned by the school committee. And also with, with designation, sort of when, when an advisory committee is established, of when is the reporting schedule to the school committee. And also makes very clear that there's no standing overall advisory committee. So you, there, you can't create an advisory committee just in general to advise the school committee. An example is, and it specifies also that sort of advisory committees are, that are required by law follow those policies and stipulations of that law. So an example would be the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Or what we call the bilingual parent advisory council is also sort of stipulated by law. And those, as you, as you might be familiar, those do have annual report requirements to the school committee. So, any questions on, on just policy right now? Not seeing any, so move on. So just looking at our current structure. And I pulled this from an old spreadsheet and updated, so I apologize. So if you, if you see your name on one and you're not on the committee, or you don't see your name and you, and you are on the committee, please let me know so that we can get this actually accurate and representing our current thing. But we have a budget subcommittee, a policy subcommittee, superintendent evaluation, audit. We refer to our contract negotiating as a subcommittee or three subcommittees, and then school equity task force. These, this is sort of currently what's in our old spreadsheet for what the charge or description is for each subcommittee. And our current membership. The, and just to be clear, even though this is on one row, these are three separate groups. They're not, there isn't just one contract negotiating subcommittee. And one of the things that I also noticed is that for some of these roles that we call subcommittees, other districts don't refer to them as subcommittees. So if you look around and poke around in sort of other school districts, there's a budget, a policy, and then an evaluation committee that is actually sort of also includes working on setting goals as well as sort of spearheading the, the actual annual evaluation. So sort of full circle, setting, setting, working to propose the goals as well as the evaluation. Contract negotiation is an appointment as opposed to a subcommittee in a lot of other districts. And that's a little bit of semantics, because those are still governed by open meeting law. These are other subcommittees or appointments. There was a data trends subcommittee that in my, to my knowledge, has not met in over three years. But that charge was, that was established back in 2014 to recommend data trends for measurement and reports to the school committee. But as I mentioned, that hasn't been happening. We have our warrant authorization representatives, Ms. Spitzer for the regional school committee. The representatives for the Collaborative for Education. And I believe these are our, our reps. And then we have liaisons for the advisory committees, the CPAC and the bilingual parent advisory council. So that, I think, is all of our, oh, one more. We also have, and I don't know who volunteered to do that for us this year, the clerical merit award selection. Mr. Demling, thank you. We are in normal years when there is an annual MASC conference, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. We send a delegate to represent us as a voting member there. There's a professional leave request representative and a regional assessment working group rep, which I don't believe that that, I also believe that that hasn't really been meeting. So a lot, a lot of various ones. And a lot of, oh, Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I think Ms. Spitzer had a question about Amherst media rep, and that is, that comes from the Amherst School Committee, not from the regional school committee. So that's, I imagine, I didn't, I didn't put this together, Ms. McDonald did, but I think that might not be listed here because these are from the regional school committee, because that's the meeting that's being tonight. But it is something that another committee has a representative on.
And that other committee also has some other appointments for, to, to liaise with the town with, for budget and capital plans. So I also note that we, we tend to be very flexible in our definition of what is a subcommittee, where, versus sort of what it looks like other districts treat and, and look at that. So these were the questions that I posed as sort of to get us started on the conversation as for these subcommittees, it, there's a couple, you know, wrapped up in, is the charge still relevant? But also related to that, is that, do we need that subcommittee? Are there changes that we want to make to either the subcommittee charge or the subcommittee structure? Membership? I'm happy to sort of, we, we've had a change in representation from the town of Leverett. So Leverett is noticeably missing on any of this, of the subcommittees. And then the other question is, do we want to consider changes in our policy? And then the other question is, do we want to consider changes in our policy, whether needed or, or desired as it relates to both subcommittees and/or advisory committees? So I'm going to stop sharing so I can actually see you all better. Thoughts? Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, Jean, you'll be very excited to hear this, that besides committees that require the chair to be on them, the only subcommittee we have that actually has an unofficial official requirement is the superintendent evaluation committee, which we decided in 2018 would be one member from each town. So congratulations.
I volunteer for that committee.
Mr. Demling?
So yeah, so thank you for bringing this up. I think, I feel like this falls under the general umbrella of school committee running itself more consciously and officially, and according to its own rules. If, if you've ever tried to go through all of our policies, we do have quite the, quite the overlapping set of, of policies. Some, some of them that we haven't revisited in quite, quite a number of years. So it's, it's, it's good, it's good to get this refreshed. And it's a good time for it too. I mean, I'm not super surprised that, given the kind of emergency crisis footing that we've been on for the last year and a half, that we haven't gotten around to this. So I don't feel terribly bad that it's taken this long, but, but you know, now that we're kind of like emerging from that, I feel like this is a good opportunity. So yeah, I mean, my, my initial thoughts on this, it certainly makes sense at a bare minimum that we should be refreshing our practices for our current subcommittees to be in line with the policies that we currently have. So in terms of, you know, membership requirements about being either on the committee or a resident from our member town or a staff member, you know, should certainly refresh and apply that. And I do remember, I don't think we did it this past year, but typically, and this was more common before Amherst's government switched over and we were all sort of on a similar spring town meeting cycles, that after all those new school committee members came on, we would do a, okay, here's the spreadsheet list of subcommittees, who's going to do what for the next year? And we kind of went down the list. So this, the idea of annually refreshing membership, I think, makes a lot of sense, not only for school committee members, but for, for any public members that are going to contribute. And I, I think categorizing a bit more accurately our different subgroups here in terms of what they are, I think would really help, not just the committee function, but for, for public participation as well. You know, like you said, we have some groups that are actually true subcommittees. We have some others that are really just individual appointments or contributions. You know, CPAC is, is its own group and we have a liaison, so it's not a subcommittee of the school committee, but it's still a very important similar thing. Same thing with LPAC. You know, SETF has its, is, is, you know, a group that's been around for a long, long time. 2014, I think it was initially set and, you know, some, some of the original members there too. So I think, you know, certainly that's, that's, that seems like it's more aligned with what that MASC reference policy was talking about in terms of advisory committees. So, you know, that's a lot of administrative questions with a lot of answers, but I do think, I do think this is the time to kind of identify, you know, and, and just kind of chunk, chunk at it, right? Let's, let's just apply our current policies and then, and then, and then go for a kind of a cleaner organization of what we have, you know, hopefully so that when we get restarted with next year, you know, we can, we can kind of execute on a, on a cleaner slate.
You're reminding me of one other key difference between our policy and sort of other model, both the model policy as well as other district policy, is that our policy says that members are appointed by the chair. Most, the model policy and others say that it's appointed by the chair with the approval of the committee. So it's a notable, not that I would willy nilly just appoint people without asking you all, but, but it is something that, that's missing in our policy, I think. Another key point. The Amherst election cycle being now in November with new members being seated in January as opposed to the former where everybody was probably newly appointed or elected at about the same time, the same couple of months, makes it a little bit challenging for us to think about an annual appointment, but it just means we have to be flexible, I suppose. But any other ideas? And are you raising your hand or scratching your ear?
Yep, scratching my ear.
Ms. Spitzer?
Thanks. So I'm generally in favor of us, for lack of a better term, kind of cleaning up the list. I guess partially we all just bear, there's a lot of work that comes with the school committee members. So to the extent that we can potentially reduce the, the administrative burden on any of us and let us focus more on core issues, I think that's important. That said, I mean, I, I really would like the idea that we continually, not continually, but at least annually look at membership, mainly just because I, if you look at that list, some of our names appear a lot more often than others' names. So I think to the extent that we can evenly distribute the burden of subcommittee work across the membership of, of the school committee, I think that's important. And I would encourage us to, at least annually do that.
Mr. Demling?
I think another opportunity here too is with this, the idea of residents. So, you know, what do residents of our member towns, how can they contribute? I can imagine some other opportunities other than the committees that we, the groups that we already have contributing, you know, if, if there are members of the public who have a particular interest in, in budgeting, you know, you, one could imagine them joining the, the budget subcommittee and, and providing some meaningful, positive, you know, contributions in that regard, or, or data trends, you know, so, or, you know, so we have, we have the concept on SETF, we have the concept on CPAC, even though it's a, a, a subcommittee. So I'm just thinking if, if one benefit of sort of making this a lot clearer and transparent about, about what are the opportunities to engage with and provide input to the committee? Because, you know, I do, because it's, it's another sort of side topic, right? Is how did, how do you provide input to meaningfully, other than the public comment and emailing us to, to the committee? And if you have a particular interest, whether that's equity or, or data trends or budget, whatnot, this could be another opportunity where we say, hey, here's an opportunity. And, and, you know, and every year we talk about, here's, you know, here's where we're at, you know, and we welcome, you know, people. It could be a, could be a nice thing.
I think one, one thing that strikes me though is I think we get, we get blurry and, and, and it gets sort of unclear, both with, within our committee as well as with the community. This, this definitional of whether it's a subcommittee or something else, and whether it's only school committee members and therefore a public meeting, or only community members or predominantly community members. And I think we have significant opportunity to sort of help ourselves as well as the community in understanding how we do the work that we do by sort of teasing that apart a little bit so that, you know, following, then what you see in a lot of other communities is that the subcommittees is really how the school committee conducts its work. And, you know, not that we would be taking that out of the full committee, but that the subcommittee is for progressing the work in between the full committee meetings, sort of much as what we just assigned some work that Ms. Stanser and Ms. Lord are taking on. And that where we want sort of community engagement and sort of, you know, in an advisory and a reporting mechanism, that we use a different structure and group structure and definition for that, so that it's clear that the subcommittee is elected, elected members conducting the work of the school committee, and the advisory committees are really just that. And I think by, by having sort of, that this sort of mix, you know, this subcommittee designation and some are serving this purpose and some are serving another purpose can become challenging for, for all of us to keep track of, I think. So I see that as an opportunity. I see a couple of hands. I don't know if it was Ms. Stanser first and then Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan?
I'm just curious, as we're talking about subcommittees and that the Chutesbury Town Meeting is coming up on the 12th, we had talked about during the budget season of creating a school committee, assessment committee, to make the final decision on what we thought should happen. I was just curious if we were going to try and do that this summer or not.
So I, I sort of interpret the question as, should we have a regional assessment working group? Again, sort of revise and refresh that group?
Well, we, I think it was Mr. Demling who brought it up, that he felt that, and I, I totally agree with him, that the school committee should be the working group and others can join, but we would be the main body.
Ms. Stanser?
I think in that, in that discussion or conversation, whatever it was, part of it was, how do we educate the community about our budget process? And I, because at those assessment meetings with, with the new town counselors, there was a sense that a lot of those people were not at all familiar with the assessment method or anything like that. So that was one of the things I, that I'm sort of holding out, waiting, because there hasn't been a good time, to talk with Dr. Slaughter about how we can describe the budget or the budgeting process in a way that's a little easier for the public to understand. So that was kind of my recollection of that discussion.
What are other folks' thoughts about this structure of our subcommittees, which subcommittees, our policy? Mr. Stanoff?
Well, to be, you know, to be blatantly honest, I was, I, I, I know guilt really well. I was brought up with, with plenty of it. So I feel as though I'll need to join a subcommittee. But, you know, I didn't go 10 rounds with all my fellow Leverett school committee members to get on the regional committee, believe it or not. I, I did volunteer to, to be on this subcommittee. So I thought twice a month in fairly long meetings was my kind of, that was my amount of subcommittee duties. So the idea of being on another subcommittee surprises me. I mean, I, but I also see that people are putting in a lot of work. So I'm, I'm, I would reluctantly join a subcommittee. I'd certainly want to know how much, how many, how often certain subcommittees meet and what, you know, what the expectations are for subcommittees.
I, I think as one of the key next steps is I'll share out that, the actual spreadsheet because some of that information is in there. But, and again, I would say that we haven't looked at that in over a year. So, because we've been in COVID times. So, so just because, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the way it is right now, but it's a starting point. Looking at folks that haven't yet spoken, Ms. Lord, Ms. Kenny, or Mr. Haynes?
I, I want to say I appreciate the work you've done so that I could understand better about the role of a subcommittee or how other school systems are doing it. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have much more valuable to offer beyond that. Because I, I looked at the slides and I was like, wow, there's a lot of things I didn't quite understand. I'm glad to know better and I'm here for the discussion in any way we want to shape our efficiency and our, our phenomenal work. Just, I claim it. So yeah, that's all.
So is this, you know, as a, as potential next steps, is this something that the committee would like to refer to the policy subcommittee to look at? Our current policy, whether we want to establish advisory committees separate from the subcommittees? Seeing some nodding heads. And as it happens, the policy committee's meeting this week, we have another policy on tonight's agenda that was not being intent for the policy subcommittee, just to be clear. But the what's, I'll share this, this spreadsheet, the full spreadsheet, and I think maybe at one of our end of June ones, we can come, meetings, we can come back to this discussion again with input from the policy subcommittee at that point, if that makes sense for folks. I know this is skintillating conversation, so I, I can just read it on your faces. Okay. And I'm sensing thumbs up for those next steps. Okay, great. Moving on, as I referenced, we have a proposed first read of a revision to our policy EBCFA on face coverings. And those, both the current and the proposed revision are included in the packet. And as a reminder for folks new to the committee, policy EBCFA was one that we adopted a year ago in COVID. It is nearly identical to the model policy that was developed by the MASC regarding face coverings. And there is a proposal now to revise it effective July 1st.
And can I speak to this, Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Yeah. And so this was developed in consultation with, you know, legal counsel and, and just the ever-changing, some of the challenges that we've experienced this year. And the fact that guidance continues to change and policy is not intended to change as frequently as perhaps guidance has shifted. So it's trying to align the district's work with the recommendations from, you know, the state, both Department of Public Health and from DESI, so that it gives the ability for us to be nimble as things are loosening up. Who knows in the future, they may tighten up again, right? With, there's lots of things we don't know. But, you know, I'll just go through it very briefly, if it's okay. It's pretty short. So it says, starting on December, on July 1st, excuse me, 2021, the districts will follow the face covering guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, DPH, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI. The superintendent will manage the interpretation implementation of guidance, this guidance. In the short term, it means three things for our summer programs. The first thing is that students would no longer to be, need to be masked when they're outside in our summer programs, is the current guidance department has. This would look to implement it for all of our programming in the summer. Secondly, would be that staff members who are working in our summer programs, if they were distanced, would now also not need to wear face coverings if they were outside during our summer programs. That's a little different. Students, it's, distancing is not part of the kind of face covering or not, but for adults it is for summer programs. And that's, again, the recommendations we received are the guidelines from the state. And the last one is in the non-school setting, so primarily in central office, we'd be following the kind of sector-specific or sector general guidance, excuse me, coming from the state, which is vaccinated people would not need to wear masks in indoor settings, but unvaccinated people would need to wear masks indoor settings. So those are the three distinct implications for the summer. What the state said last week is is they will be putting out face covering guidance in the summer for the fall. We don't know what that is yet. But, you know, the short term implications of the three I mentioned. I would say personally, I think aligning with the state guidance is the recommendation we've received from the local health director, that when we sort of create our own policies, we have discordance between what's happening at the state level and what's happening locally creates some challenges. And I'll give one tangible example and then just open up for questions or comments. The most recent state guidance is that contact tracing should only be done for folks within a certain distance, only indoors. So in other words, the kind of past practice of contract tracing when folks are outside is no longer the Department of Health recommendation in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so since our town, the contract tracing is primarily done by the town's contract tracer, if we have different rules or different methodologies, then the contract tracer, and this has come up this spring a couple of times, it leads to some challenges where we're not working with the same rules as the town is or the contract tracing from DPH is. So this is for me, an effort to align our work with the department here in Massachusetts, as well as frankly other districts in Massachusetts as well. So that's sort of the thinking, you know, I think what I'd ask, wherever this policy ends up, is if it is possible to be voted at the next regional meeting, which is the 15th, which actually would be a joint meeting, that'll give us enough time to inform staff members, families of whatever the rules will be on face, on face coverings for summer programs, because I don't want to do a last minute notification of them. And our summer programs start on July 6th, so it gives us a little bit of time to both communicate out as well as to develop guidelines for use. So that's, this is the first draft. It's unbelievably short as it relates to policy. So that doesn't mean it doesn't have broad implications. So wanted to bring it to the committee tonight, see if the committee had thoughts so that we would have enough time to make edits before a potential second read and vote two weeks from now, again, on whatever the policy ends up being.
Questions? Comments on the policy, Ms. Stanser?
I guess I would just say that I think we learned over the course of this past year that flexibility is, is important, that when things are written so strictly, it leaves no room for variation. And, and I think some flexibility is important in, in this situation. And I think this change would be a good one.
Ms. Kenny?
I agree with Ms. Stanser. I think flexibility is, is key. And I also think that putting our policies and our practices more in line with the Department of Health and other public agencies that know far more about changing pandemic issues than I do, or, you know, I don't work in healthcare, I think is a really good idea. So I am in full support of updating this policy.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. You know, the state is in a much different place than it was a few months before school began last, last September, where they were really late and drip, drip, dripping with, with their guidance to us. And so we, they sort of forced the hands of many districts, including ourselves, in trip to, you know, define very specific policies. And, yeah, I mean, the flexibility is, is, is what we need going forward in terms of minimizing the potential disruption to student services. I also think that, I mean, if the state ever really went off the reservation, DESI, and it did something that we all felt very strongly was wrong, there's nothing that prevents us at our next meeting from passing a policy, from proposing and then passing a policy. So, you know, it's not like we're giving up that authority. We're just not statically defining what we project is the appropriate public health guidance, which I think, given this point of stability, not that we're completely out of the woods of COVID, I'm not nearly suggesting that, but given the relative point of stability where we are at with this experience, deferring to the Department of Public Health, I think, makes all the sense in the world.
Ms. Spitzer?
I don't have much to add other than to say, you know, I, I agree with following the guidance from the Department of Public Health. I also feel like the communication around this is going to be really important. So not so much about whether or not I think this is the right policy, but if it's okay to talk about it adjacently, I think implementing this is going to be tricky because a lot of community members, I think, will have, I mean, we've, we've been getting communication from community members who wish we'd move faster with shifting towards the state guidance. But I do believe that the, you know, personally talking about folks who are going into, you know, new environments without masks, you know, there's a lot of anxiety around this. And so I think just communicating and making sure that we are affirming that anybody who still desires to wear a mask can wear a mask and just making sure that we allow people to, you know, have some grace during the transition.
So we're not planning, so to follow our policy on policy, we, we don't, we review policy as a first read. Any, any requests to, for edits or updates to the language in the policy, we refer to the policy subcommittee. And then at a second read is where we consider a vote, just to be clear. So I'm not hearing any sort of edits on the, on the wording or phrasing of the policy itself. Is that correct? People are generally in board with that. Dr. Moise?
Yeah, I just, I want to highlight, I think, Ms. Spitzer's point, which is incredibly important. And that's really why, you know, I feel like I'm pushing at a time of year where there's lots of things that need to get done to try to have this resolved on the 15th, is that it gives us time to communicate while school is still in session about this for, for summer program, for families that may be considering where they want to come in, you know, it's for our special ed program, it's the last opportunity for virtual school for families who want that. And if this is a factor, then certainly we want to communicate that in enough time where families can make, you know, the best decision for their, themselves and their child. So I think that's really the thinking of trying to be able to have this vote with enough time where we're able to let folks know that that's what's planned. So I just wanted to highlight that point because I think it's really important. And it's going to be really important throughout, like in the summer, when DESI finally and the Department of Public Health does have their face covering guidance. I mean, you might have seen that, you know, they came out with some, it was a parenthetical expression in a DESI document last week that then garnered lots of attention and lots of thoughts from many stakeholder groups. So we know it'll have a lot of attention, you know, down the road, but certainly for our summer programs, want to communicate as much as possible. And the other thing I wanted to say really clearly is we're not in a place where we, the district, will have a vaccine passport program, will be, you know, we're a district, we're not the Commonwealth, Commonwealth at this point, unlike, you know, New York is the only sort of other counter example to it, doesn't have a system around that. So, you know, we want to also be really clear in terms of the office side that, you know, we will, you know, that's going to be a challenge, but it's going to be a challenge everywhere as well. And I think it's, you know, we started talking about it at a leadership level today about how do we make sure people feel comfortable both wearing a mask if they choose to, regardless of their vaccination status, that there's, there's no pressure to, to make any decision that people are uncomfortable with, as long as it fits within the guidelines. So, you know, I think that communication piece and that kind of sensitivity to the fact that people may be in really different places on it, and, you know, I think was well articulated in an article I read this week, and that for unvaccinated folks, this may be a different experience, and they may want to, you know, mask up in a different way than they did before as more unvaccinated, more vaccinated people, maybe unmasking. So I think all of that is we want to approach this as sensitively and carefully as possible and have our communication be as clear as possible to all stakeholder groups. Sorry, it's long-winded, but I just, I'm glad you mentioned that because I think it's critical.
Mr. Demling?
The only other point on this that, and I don't know if this needs to go into the policy or not, but it certainly needs to go into the communication, is that, and this is just how I feel, though I have no reason to believe anybody else in the committee feels differently. If people or staff, if students or staff want to wear a mask if it's not required, that it's not only okay, it's totally supported and encouraged in a stigma-free environment. I mean, I totally, I believe in vaccines as much as anybody, but somebody wants to wear nine masks and a hazmat suit, like, you know, it's, it's, it's your own feeling, you know, it's your own experience. And, you know, and we're, and in addition to people being in different places in a possibly immunocompromised situation, people are in different emotional places and different places with their experience with COVID, you know? I mean, it's certainly not inconsistent to be completely believing of the vaccine science and yet still want to wear a mask outside, you know? That's, that's, that's a valid human choice. So, again, I'm sure everybody feels that way, but I feel like when we're, when we're going to the point of like lifting all requirements, which is, it's, or many, or most of the requirement, mask requirements of the past, which sounds like what DESI is doing, I think I just want to make sure we're always emphasizing that point.
Any other comments? So we'll look at this again and consider a vote at our June 15th meeting. Which brings us to the next topic, which is future agenda planning. So we have a meeting right now planned for keep losing my cursor. Because I moved there. For the 15th, that is planned to be a joint meeting with the Amherst School Committee and the Pelham School Committee, where we'll hear the artifacts presentation to support the superintendent evaluation. We'll also be looking at, in hearing about the return to school guidance from DESI, which we expect to have by then, hopefully, and then the possible vote for this, this face covering policy. So those are the joint topics. Then the region, we will continue on our own, come back to the subcommittee policy and structure. Any next step, continued discussion on that? Would also like to talk about our summer meetings, and I should say retreat, because I, that, that'll be what we talk about, is whether we meet over the summer, as well as our proposed meeting calendar for 21, for the next four years. And then potentially, if needed, an executive session on negotiations. Did we miss anything? Mr. Stanoff?
I'll probably just, I don't, I don't know if the sixth grade topic will come up, but I'll probably want to say something, whether, it might be very little about our discussion.
Good point. But that's probably wise to, for us to just have that sort of as a standing one, even if we don't need it, we can just always move very quickly right through that agenda item. Great. And just as a reminder, so that you're mentally prepared, that after that superintendent artifacts presentation, we will be going from there into, we'll have one week to complete our evaluation based on that artifacts presentation. So just sort of be, just know that it's a, it's a short fuse, a pretty short fuse this year. If there's nothing else, then we can move on to the next item, which is our warrant report. So Ms. Spitzer, do you have warrants to share with us?
I do indeed. Just give me one moment, one. So I have four, but I'm having trouble. Oh, it looks like I've got one twice. Okay, so that's the explanation. Okay, so I only have three. So I, Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $212,810.02 for the warrant dated May 19th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $199,267.27, revolving fund expenses of $824, and grant fund expenses of $12,618.75. And this was signed by me on May 20th, 2021. I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $223,728.08 for the warrant dated May 25th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $194,613.32, revolving fund expenses of $22,661.13, and grant fund expenses of $5,734.53, and other funds in the amount of $719.10. This was signed by me on May 25th, 2021. I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $411,511.37 for the warrant dated May 28th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $376,758.99, revolving fund expenses of $2,354.40, grant fund expenses of $31,897.98, and other funds in the amount of $500. And this was signed by me on June 1st, 2021. Thanks.
And next up, we have some gifts to accept, and those were added to the packet. I will make a motion, move that we accept the following gifts from donor Anthony Brackett to support 2018 Summer Blast Bass Base Clarinet, number 1430LP, with accessories for the middle school and high school band program, estimated amount of $1,750. From Barbara and James Pistron, number 12677, to support the FY21 Arms Ultimate Scholarship in the amount of $1,000. From Gardner's Supply to support a gift card for Summit Academy students with a value of $250, for a total cash value of $1,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Met by McDonald, and second by Spitzer. Any discussion? Saying none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny? Kenny, aye. Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Stanoff?
Stanoff, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And the motion passes unanimously. And I believe we are now, yes. So I move that we enter into executive session according to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 213, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the APEA. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I declare, with no intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Lord, second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Lord. We now take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Stanoff?
Stanoff, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. So we are adjourning to executive session. Thank you, Amherst Media.